17, we do have a quorum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes, a copy of the minutes for the special work session, meeting of November 6, 2017, the regular meeting of November 6, 2017 are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Hanson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills, checks number 97508 through 97591, totaling $185,857. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Canofla, second by council member Liljergren for the approval of the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, proclamations. We have nothing. Consent, 2018 annual license renewals, approve. Administrative intern agreement, NJPA, approve, authorize. Display of fireworks permit, country club, Little Falls Lions, approve. Fire department report, October 2017, receive. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, November 2017, receive. Housing redevelopment authority minutes, October 2017, receive. Planning commission minutes, November 2017, receive. Waste water treatment facility report, October 2017, receive. Water treatment facility report, October 2017, receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Gushak, second by council member Lundberg to approve their consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings, so we got a public hearing, wellhead protection plan, part one. Greg, go ahead.
This is the information we heard about at our last meeting. This is the public hearing for part one of the wellhead protection. We did a water model for our aquifer, our well field. So tonight, we've got the affidavit of publication, as well as the, excuse me, the affidavit of publication for the, for the public hearing here. So looking at the wellhead protection, there's a couple of acronyms that I'll touch on. This is the wellhead protection area. DWISMA is the drinking water supply management area. That's the area that we specifically look at. And then we've got the aquifer vulnerability assessments, both one-year and 10-year time of travel for that. Last time our wellhead protection was updated was in 2004. It's supposed to be on a 10-year cycle in terms of re-adopting it or revisiting it. We did get an extension on this because if you recall, in 2014, we were reviewing the aquifer, both at the airport as well as at the firehouse. So we requested an extension and we were granted that, just to see how that would come into play with our current aquifer. This is the aquifer that was identified back in 2014, in terms of where our drinking water was coming from. You notice it extends more to the north, over in the industrial area up and through here. With the new model, it actually goes further to the east, which I'll get into. This is a zoomed-out view of everything that was taken into account with this. This is Camp Ripley, up on the north part up here. You've got the Bell Prairie and so on and so forth coming through there. So right now, we have eight wells supplying water to the city Little Falls. All of them are basically in the same aquifer, in terms of where they're pumping water from, and then we use those as primary wells. So like I mentioned before, we delineate the one and 10-year time of travel. One year is defined as the emergency response area, 10-year time of travel is kind of standard in terms of what to look at if you have, or to plan for and look at and make sure that you don't have any contaminated sources in that, that area. Because of some recent information that we received in conjunction with the Department of Health, this was back in like 2012, 2014 timeframe, we also did a surface water contribution area. They did some testing to see how much water of our system was actually pulled from surface water, mainly the Mississippi River. And between 50 and 70 percent of our water actually comes from the Mississippi River. So that's where the surface water contribution comes into play, and we'll get into that in a little bit here. So looking at our recharge area for our wells, the darker blue is a higher recharge area. That's where a lot of groundwater is coming from. You've got Green Prairie Lake up on the northwest there, and then you can see it, this is a good area. This is pretty decent around Little Falls, but then once you get south of town, that's decent there. But west of town, I should say, is more silty sand, as well as east over by the Piers area. So looking at the, the model that they developed based off of actual borings that were taken from, from wells throughout, throughout the Morrison County. Any, any well that's drilled after 1990 has to be reported to the Department of Health. And so it lays out in those well logs what level they found various types of soils, whether it's sand, gravel, peat, clay, and that's what helped build this particular model. You'll notice, this is what we call layer one. This is essentially the surface model. So the first 25 feet of the model is what we see here. So we've got sand along the Mississippi River Valley here. You go east of town, basically there's the break right there, we'll see a silty or sand. West of town, it's a little bit more of a clay-type-based area, and that's typical of what we, what we would expect on the surface. You go down another 25 feet, you start to see little pockets of, of silty clay on the east side, more clay on the west, and there's that little, little ravine right in here that we've found some, some soil borings or some well logs that show, show the sand in there. Again, going down, you'll see a little bit more of that, that clay to the bottom. Alright, so this is basically an overshot or snapshot of what, what they found after putting all this information in the, in the model. We've got the one-year time of travel right here in red, right around the, the city hall area. And then this finger that stands out towards the fairgrounds, this is the 10-year time of travel for the groundwater. I mentioned that we looked at the surface water, which is this much larger area that drains to it. But this area right here is what they determined is what drains to the city groundwater for us to, to use. So that's the area that we're going to be looking at. Coming up here, when we look at what's called the part two. So this was the part one, this was to develop the model. Part two is actually going to be developing strategies to protect this area here, so that we continue to have water that's potable and drinkable to, to use. So comparison, the 2014, excuse me, the 2014 was a little bit farther north of town with refined model and the more information from the well logs. This is now the, the model that we're looking at. It does extend to the west side, because the surface water gets into the river and we could potentially get that into, into our wells. So we'll be looking at the extra area outside of this in terms of implementation strategies to protect it. Looking at the vulnerability, the long and short, we're in a high-vulnerable area for our aquifer. Like we saw on that first slide in regards to the surface of the, of the, the model, this is all sand, all the way down to the, the aquifer itself. So anything that gets on top of the soil has the potential to go all the way down to, to our drinking water. So you'll see the red here is, is high vulnerable. There's a little bit of silty clay over here at the, at the fairgrounds. But by and large, we're in a high-vulnerable aquifer, which we suspected that because we don't have a confining layer or a clay layer that separates the two, excuse me. Same way with the, the surface water. Again, if it gets onto the ground, gets into the storm sewer, gets into the Mississippi River, it has the potential to get into our, our aquifer, because between 50 and 70 percent of our water is from the, from the river. So looking at the part two component of it, with that, that's going to be the implementation strategies. We're going to be looking at inventorying what the contaminating sources are, or potential sources would be, so that we can keep an eye on those and identify what emergency strategies we may need in the event that there's a spill or, or contaminant for it. So that'll be coming up here, probably in a couple of months. We'll, we'll be looking to get a consultant on board to help us lay that stuff out and develop strategies for that. So that's going to be, going to be coming up in the next steps. And that is it. Any questions?
I don't know that it's exactly related, but the raw water line that we put in a couple of projects?
Yep.
How close is that to being to the area by the fire hall?
It's about a block and a half away from the fire hall. We've got it all the way down on Third Street right now. We have not crossed the railroad tracks. That is, that is quite an expense to complete that. But we've completed it all the way down from the railroad tracks, south to, what is that? Third Avenue? I think it's Third Avenue over there. No, Fourth Avenue. So it's basically a block and a half from there and a block and a half from the water plant. So in the event that we actually need to connect that up in short order, it shouldn't take very long to, to complete that at all. So it's right down here is where it's at, and then right at the railroad tracks here. So there's not a lot of construction that would be needed to, to put that in.
You said that would give us an additional five years?
Potentially at the time, it was, was five years. Looking at, at this here, you can see the, the one-year time of travel is right in through here. So it, the fire hall is right down here. It's outside of this stretch, this is supposedly 10 years. So it's between that one and 10 is what, what we're at for the time of travel, yes. So we didn't model a well in this. We didn't model a well pulling in this area, so I can't give you definitive five years, six years.
We got a one and a 10-year there, and we're way out of that, but we might only get one to five?
Well, the reason I say that is because down here, this will start pulling water from it. So depending on where the contaminant is at, if the contaminant is right here, it's going to be more than 10 years. But if the contaminant is in the river, then we're in probably the one-year timeframe. So depends on where it's at.
Can you show us, just out of curiosity, where the wells are?
Yep. Actually, these dots here are, are the wells. Basically, they're right around city hall.
Oh, they're all right close.
They're all right around us, yeah, within 150 feet.
They're all within the throw of a baseball.
Yes.
Wow. You're at right now.
They're the brown buildings?
Yep.
That are outside city hall here.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Let's hit your arm.
The little apartment buildings?
You might be able to.
I probably can, sort of.
Okay, anything before we open up for public? Any public comment? Second call for public comment? Third call for public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, 7:46.
Come on, Scott, you don't want to just stand up and say something for entertainment value?
What is the wish of the council?
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Alderman Hercock to receive part one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries lettings, HVAC equipment, maintenance, climate makers, wastewater treatment facility. Greg?
Yeah, at the wastewater treatment facility, we are looking at doing some maintenance on our HVAC equipment down there. These would be in buildings that we plan to keep, once the renovation is completed. Those particular buildings and the equipment haven't been working properly over the last couple of years here. I know one of them basically is on a, a manual switch to turn on and off. So it's not very energy-efficient to, to work it that way. We'd rather have it on a thermostat where it runs to a certain temperature and then it turns off. Right now, it's a manual switch for the guys to turn it on and off. So we are asking to get approval to have climate makers do the inspection, cleaning, and give us recommendations on what needs to be fixed at those particular locations in the amount of $5,200. Climate makers is the ones that we had do the repairs down at the library. We've had good success with their, with their work and their review or maintenance of that, that facility. So we're looking at doing that as well down at the, at the waste plant.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to award to climate makers.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Mayor Zelka to award the bid $5,200 to climate makers. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm just curious, Greg, what are we doing in that building? Because we're not baking all that lime anymore, right?
We're not baking the lime, correct. We still dewater it, so it goes through a centrifuge, takes all the water out of the, the sludge and gets into a cake form.
So you got operations continuing in that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, but we're not, we're not adding lime, so we don't have that to continue with.
I mean, $5,200 is $5,200.
True.
Do you foresee needing that building with that?
We will. We will continue to need that building in the future, yes.
And just to clarify, this $5,200 is just to inspect and clean? But they, if there's repairs, then they're going to make a recommendation?
That's correct.
Which could potentially be a lot more money?
Most likely, yes, yes. I mean, I would expect, knowing that we're having operational issues, that there's going to be some repairs needed. Whether or not it's as inexpensive as a new thermostat, or hey, you need a new furnace in there, that's what I need to, to figure out. Where, where are we at with those, with that, you know, schematic? Is it over here or over here?
So basically, it's a 15, or $5,200 estimate?
No, they'll also do the cleaning of it. So they'll clean out, if the heat exchanger is plugged with lime dust or something like that, they'll clean that out to get it operational again. But like at the, at the library, there's a number of thermostats that just weren't working. And so they calibrated those and got those working again, so that we could actually use the, the system the way it was intended. That would be the same thing here. We don't use air for the thermostats at the, at the waste plant, but they'd be able to clean that, clean it out, so that it at least can get operational and then identify which parts are, are broken and need to be replaced.
Any other discussion?
Yes. On the first page, it says the price to complete the initial inspection is $5,200. But then on the next page, he's also proposing to replace the furnace for $8,500. So are we agreeing to both, or?
Nope, just right now, I just want to see what's, what's broken and get it repaired and cleaned. Without knowing if that furnace and the AC is broken, I don't want to just throw it away and go to that. So once we find out what's actually needing the repairs and what needs to be done, I don't want to, I'm not asking you to spend that money yet.
Okay. So we're not approving that, we're just approving the inspection?
Just the inspection, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries nothing on our old business, new business, Airport Commission recommendation, pre-application to FAA, Federal Aviation Administration Crosswind Runway 2018, accept, approve. Greg?
Yes, the FAA every year wants to have a pre-application, basically for them to get a, a sense of how much they're going to be looking at for grant allocation that, that particular year. This year, we are looking at applying for that, like we normally do. But we would like to add in the, the crossway runway design contract into it. The Airport Commission is recommending that we approve this to, to submit it. We will still have to bring to the council the grant agreement, so, for approval for that, as well as any design contract that we have with the consultant. But the pre-app basically gets them started, gets them on their, their budget cycle, so to speak, so that they can get enough funds in their, in their pot to divvy up amongst the, the various airports. So tonight, we're looking to, to submit that and get your approval to, to do so.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Canofla, second by council member Lundberg to accept and approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Economic Development Authority recommendation, ordinance number three, seventh series, sale of Gertz Property LLC, accept, introduce. Laurie?
Yes, the EDA entertained offers on some property, which is the old Clark Gas Station. If you recall, about a year ago, we had an offer on the property, and then the individual that made the offer had a change in plans and ended up not going through or following through with it. So we did offer the property up for sale again. We did get a couple of offers on the property. The high offer came from Gertz Properties LLC in the amount of $18,000, and the EDA is recommending the sale of the property.
What is the wish of the council? Ordinance number three has been introduced by Mayor Zelka. Heritage Preservation Commission recommendation, downtown design guidelines update. Tom Zahn and Associates?
The HPC has had the Downtown Design Guideline Manual. They had one printing of it done back in 1998, and then they had another printing done, oh, probably 10 years later, I think it was after that. So the HPC is wanting to update that book again. They will update it based on improvements that have been made into some of the businesses downtown. The Design Guideline is a book that is used when we have buildings in the historic area that want to do facade improvements. This gives them a basis of, of, you know, potential improvements to their property, what it could look like, and some options. With the technology we have right now, they would provide us the information digitally, and then we can just put it on our website, so we won't have a need for the printing of the actual books right now. So the HPC is requesting that we hire Tom Zahn and Associates to update the, the Guideline Manual. He did the other two printings of it. So it would be at $3,400 for the four properties. And if there is additional property that they would want to include, it would be $600 for, per additional property.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Liljergren for approval. Any discussion?
Would there be a cap on how many properties they could include in there? Because it's $3,400 for four, and then six for each additional property.
I believe there are one or two additional properties that they're considering. So the, the most would be for six.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries easement agreement, wastewater treatment facility, approve. Greg?
Yeah, on this agenda item, I'm asking the council to give ourselves a utility easement at the waste treatment plant.
And do it.
If you recall the details on the, the Bell Prairie Soccer Complex that we just recently went through, it's the same situation where there's two sets of standards. One, in the right-of-way, is called the 10-state standards that we design and construct all of our utilities. Two, then once you go on to private property or property that's not in the public right-of-way, there's a Minnesota Department of Labor and Industries requirement. If the utilities are in an easement given to the city, then they fall underneath the 10-state standards. If it's under private property, then it falls under the Department of Labor and Industry. To stick with the 10-state standards, to be consistent with everything else that is constructed in our system, we would like to give ourselves an easement, so that we can avoid having to, to deal with that. There's a couple of differences, they're very similar, but there's still some distinct differences between the two. You know, pipe material, acceptable pipe material, the slopes, that type of stuff, in terms of what is allowed and what's not allowed at, on the private property. So by giving ourselves an easement, we kind of get away from that and have one consistent set of standards to design and construct by, for that system.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Hanson for approval. Discussion?
Oh, just that I got a chuckle reading this.
Yeah.
For the weekend, we're giving ourselves an easement. Make sure that dollar gets accounted for too, buddy.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries extension of management agreement, Friends of Linden Hill, approve.
So approximately 10 years ago, the city entered into a management agreement with the Friends of Linden Hill for the management of the properties. That has been going very well for us, and that contract expires at the end of 2017. So this agreement would extend our existing agreement for an additional 10 years.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Gushak, second by council member Canofla for the approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries extension of management agreement, Friends of Pine Grove Zoo. Laurie?
Similarly, we entered into an agreement with the Friends of Pine Grove Zoo to manage the zoo about 10 years ago. That agreement expires as well, and so this agreement would extend our original agreement for an additional 10 years.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Lundberg, second by council member Liljergren for the approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau agreement. Extension land lease agreement to Rosenmeyer House, approve. Laurie?
So we currently have an agreement with the Friends, or excuse me, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau in that they rent or lease the Rosenmeyer House from the city to house the, the Tourism Bureau. So this agreement would go for two more years, extend the agreement for two years. The rent would increase to $600 per month for calendar year 2018, $700 per month for calendar year 2019. They're currently at $500 a month.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Gushak for the extension of the land lease agreement. Any discussion?
You're all right with that increase?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Discrimination 13A and B says race, color, sex, age, or national origin. If you go down to the next document that we have with them, line eight, under Convention and Visitors Bureau duties, non-discrimination says race, color, creed, national origin, sex, religion, marital status, age, handicap. I would like to see the first two changed to read the exact same as this. It's, it's, it includes handicap and religion and age also, which are not mentioned. Does that make sense? Under 13A and B?
Yep.
Change that so it reads the same as?
Make it uniform between the Tourism Promotion Agreement clause number eight and the Lease Agreement number 13, both A and B.
And B, yes.
Okay, we'll get those changed.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries tourism agreement, approve. Laurie?
Again, we have a longstanding agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to offer tourism services for us. This is paid for through the 5%, or excuse me, 3% lodging tax and 1/2% restaurant tax that the city collects. The existing agreement we have with them and agreements in the past have put a cap on the amount. The CBB gets 95% of the amount we collect, up until the city has collected 125,000, and then anything after that is, is split 50/50, in which the city retains the 50%. And then the Convention and Visitors Bureau comes to us with special projects as a way to spend those dollars. So this agreement would take the cap out of there. So in the future, the Convention and Visitors Bureau would just get, would get 95% of what we collect, and then they don't have to come to us for the special projects. Under state legislation, the money does have to go for tourism, heads-on beds, to promote the city, those kinds of things. So the 50% that the city is keeping isn't money that we can just spend on whatever we choose. It does have to be spent on tourism-related activities.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Liljergren, second by Alderman Hercock for approval. Any discussion?
I have three things. Under number four, City Duties, compensation, the city will collect a monthly lodging tax from hotel and motel owners. And others, providing lodging services, what does that mean, and others? Would that be Airbnb's? Would that be the convent who rents out rooms? What would that?
It's going to be anybody who rents out their rooms. So, for instance, Linden Hill does a rental.
Right.
The Bed and Breakfast do a rental. So anybody that does a rental that we're aware of.
That we're aware of, okay.
We can't collect that, that, which we don't know. But if we're aware of them, we, we do send them the information and require them to pay the tax.
Okay. And then my next question is, the city, does the city have any money in the, in the fund of the fifty percent that is dispersed after the one hundred and twenty-five thousand? Does, is the city currently holding any of that money?
Yes, we do have some of those funds, yes.
And will that be transferred at the beginning of the year?
Not at this time.
Not this time?
Not at this time, no.
So the city will just continue to hold on to that?
Correct.
Okay. But in the future, they'll get the full ninety percent? Okay, one more. One more. Under Convention Visitor Bureau Duties, number eleven, that sentence reads, "The CBB will include as a significant part of its program, in addition to attracting visitors and tourists and promotion of Little Falls as a meeting place." And then it doesn't finish. I don't understand what that sentence means. Should the word "and" be "the"?
I will have to look at the previous agreement and see what it says.
Okay.
I know we rewrote the agreement because it was, it just needed to be updated, and it's very possible we just missed something in there. So I will check that out.
I don't really know what that means. So, thank you.
So amere the old agreement?
Correct.
With that portion, perfect. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Prosecution Agreement, Morrison County Attorney, approve. Laurie?
So in twenty seventeen, we entered into a new agreement with the Morrison County for prosecution of city fines and tickets. The, it's been working well with the county as far as the, the new program, in that they're getting a base fee from us rather than a percentage of the fines. So in discussion with Brian Midendorf, the county attorney, he would like to see us extend the existing agreement that we have for three years. So this would run from January one of twenty eighteen through December of twenty twenty.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Police Administrative Specialist and Police Records Technician. Posting to the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employment, and appoint Rhonda Munir, Police Records Technician?
Yes, with the change in the, the job descriptions that, that we've had for the Police Records Technician, which was slash dispatch, removing the duties or limiting the duties of the dispatch role changes that position from an essential position to a nonessential position. And according to state law, essential, the LEL's bargaining unit can only hold within its union essential positions. So patrol officers, sergeants, those dispatchers, because they were deemed essential, were, were included. Now, with the change that we made to the job description, once that position is implemented, it would not fall within their union's eligible participants. So we would need to either leave the position out as a non-union position, or we can unilaterally add them into AFSMI. It's likely if we left them out as, as non-union, they would petition to have that position come into the, into their bargaining unit at a, at a specific, or in due time. So that would just take more time and probably cost us some attorney time and, and the like to make that switch. Discussing it with their business, with their union stewards, they don't, they're not uncomfortable with us making this, this maneuver. So it would be that we would move that position into the AFSMI union and then appoint simultaneously Rhonda back into, into that role. The other position that we have ju, created job description for would also be placed into the AFSMI union, as it is also not a, not, it is a nonessential employee.
What is the wish of the council?
Are we doing just one, or are we doing one and two?
Number one to start with.
Okay.
And number one is a simultaneous move the position and appoint Rhonda.
I move to authorize and approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka to move position and appoint Rhonda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number two, post position. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilmember Gushak to post the position, administrative, for Administrative Specialist. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Any reports?
Mr. President, a couple things. First of all, reminder that San Fray Friday night, is that six o'clock, I believe? I don't know if we all got an email on that, but you can ride on the city fire trucks if anybody's interested. Show up at the fire hall a little early.
I might have a seat in, in a bus car, too, if anyone.
Front or back?
More in the back than in the front.
It is.
And also, John and I.
It is six o'clock.
On the truck or in it? Yes.
Depends on the weather.
I'm in it, sitting outside. Also, John and I attended Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I've spoken many times. I'm on the Board of Directors. I'm co-chair of the LGA Tax, Property Tax Committee. Excellent conference again. They do such a great job, and I have to thank the council for the fact, you know, Greg is very aware of the ME-SURB and everything that's going on with that and with water quality. And where we'd be without them. They lobby really hard. They have some representatives there from both sides of the aisle, and they spoke favorably about their relationships with the Coalition. And it's just a great lobbying group that does so many good things for us. As far, I think they were a major player in getting us the LGA that we got last year. And, and it's just such a valued group of people. I mean, to go there, they had a lot of talk about childcare. John and I were discussing some ideas, and, you know, it's an issue throughout Greater Minnesota City. And that's probably what I like about it best, is it's all Greater Minnesota City, smaller towns, our size and smaller, working together for a common cause. And it's just, we have to continue to work with our legislators and make sure that they take care of us and rule Minnesota. John and Tru, you got something to add?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, coming from my previous city, we, we talked about joining Coalition or Association of Small Cities, and they, and they always felt that, all in all, I think the League of Minnesota Cities is doing so much to lobby for us. We don't need to be a part of those other efforts. Having firsthand experience and seeing what it, what it is that they do and the communications that I've, I've had with legislators and, and knowing that they're hearing from the Coalition on issues that are very important to us, and they're, and now seeing the effect of some of the decisions that they're, they're making, I'm, I can definitely say I'm seeing the impact in our membership and the advocacy that they're, they're doing and they're taking for, for us as, as Greater Minnesota Cities. This isn't, this isn't to say that the League isn't doing anything at that. They do a fantastic job as well. But their, their focus is to serve all cities of Minnesota, from Minneapolis down to Zambroda and, you know, down to, you know, Flensburg and, and Hillman and Buckman and those, and those tiny little towns, too. They're going to, they're not going to be able to, to hit all of the key issues that are coming up to, to cities, especially cities of, of our size and, and, you know, significantly somewhat smaller, as well as the needs that we're having, being in a location that isn't in the seven-county metro area. It's, and the seven-county metro area has their own lobbying firm. They have their own, you know, their own coalition, so to speak, that's going to advocate for the things that they need and want. So it's, if we don't have these voices at the Capitol to, to continue to, to be an ever-present reminder to our legislatures, we're, we're just not going to see these, these effects happen. And now to go beyond that and to, and their work with ME-SURB and the others around the water, water quality issues and the, and the lawsuits that they've, unfortunately, we've had to take up to, to get action on, on these rule, rulemaking procedures that aren't doing what they need to, they're not, they're not keeping, cleaning water. It, it's going way beyond what is cost-effective in, in making, you know, keeping our, our water sources clean and the, and the permitting and the regulations that are going on. That, if they're not there, we would be suffering from some extreme cost burdens into, into building our systems to, to take care of these things, to, to have very, very little effect. And as, as not, as a member of MPCA said at one of their events, why are they, why is MPCA regulating so hard on this? Because they can on us and they can't on someone else. That being the point to non-point sources. So it's, if, if not for the Coalition, I, you know, we would, we would certainly be seeing some, some pretty extreme impacts to, to the things that are going on in that space.
What they say about Osakis, John, that it was eleven million dollars they'd have to do and work?
Yeah.
Move the needle one, one thousandth.
One thousandth, one one-thousandth of a percent. Eleven million dollars.
Water quality in Lake Osakis, that much, eleven million dollars.
To reduce one one-thousandth of a percent of the phosphorus into that, into that lake.
So to move the needle one percent, do the math. It's not pretty.
So, so appreciate the opportunity to, to continue to attend and participate, and welcome anybody else to, to join in those, in those meetings. They do have a Legislative Action Day, March fourteenth of, of next year, so.
Chiefs can read that.
Oh, you want me to read it, Greg?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
I received a, a letter today from Superintendent Jones, and before I even read the letter, I just want to comment that it has been just an unbelievable experience having put Kenny Koppas in the school. Every school event I go to, every time I visit a school, I have administrators, teachers, students come up to me and thank me for allowing Kenny to work in the schools. He is doing an unbelievable job. And I think the, the biggest fear was after Dave left, Dave Stump, that he had done, built such, you know, great relationships with the kids and the parents in the schools, and that that was going to fail, or we were going to lose that connection. And Kenny is only built on that. So the letter. I'll read it. I wanted to write you a note to let you know how much Little Falls Community Schools values and appreciates our collaboration in providing police liaison services to, to the student staff and families of our district. And this is from Superintendent Jones. For close to fifteen years, we were very fortunate to work closely with Officer David Stump. He was very effective in various ways, but we all knew that Dave's best attribute was creating and maintaining relationships with students and their families. When Dave announced his intention to retire, I must say that many of, many of us in the district were concerned how his void would be filled. I am ecstatic to tell you now that we are no longer worried. Officer Kenny Koppas, in just a few short months, has truly picked up right where Officer Stump left off. Kenny has been a rock of support to staff and families as he handles his job in both a personal and professional manner. It's evident to see that Kenny cares about people. It has already become his calling card here in the district. I'm amazed at the number of relationships he has built in less than ninety days, demonstrating that he has indeed fully invested himself into the liaison position. We consider ourselves extremely fortunate to have been the recipients, or the recipients of tremendous service from Officer Stump for more than a decade. Likewise, we are hopeful that Officer Kenny Koppas seeks the longevity in this position that Officer Stump enjoyed. I felt it was important for you to hear the district's thoughts about Officer Koppas and our liaison relationship. So it feels good to go up there and visit because we have such a strong relationship with the school. So it's nice.
I think he enjoys it up there as much as they enjoy it.
He loves it. He's all smiles. Yep. He's all teeth every time I talk to him. He loves his job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we will adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah.